America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, all.
Let us pray. So Heavenly Father, we come here tonight, Lord, we give you thanks for this chance to be here to do the work of this county. Lord, we do pray that you will guide us as we do it. Lord, we pray for our youth as they have seen success and we pray for them as they travel and compete. We pray for safety and for good sportsmanship and all things. Lord, we do pray for our nation at this time. There have been some trying days and we just pray for your hand upon our nation. Please be with us tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Master. All righty. Let me back up just a minute as far as the call to order on that. This is the Monday, July the 15th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, Chester County Council Meeting. Just to back up, make sure we get that on the record. All right, getting on down to the number three, approval of the minutes from July the 1st, 2024. Need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of July 1st, 2024.
Okay, need a second.
Second.
Any comments or corrections? Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, thank you. Number four, under citizens' comments, we don't have any. And on the public hearing, number five, we don't have any. Moving along to number six is ordinance resolutions and proclamation. Under A, proclamation in support of the Chester 8U Diamond Youth Softball All-Stars. At that time, I'd like to make a presentation, off the presentation on that. That's a fine looking group of ball players there. Sure is. You got it? All right. It is my honor to present this proclamation. Proclamation in support of the Chester 8U Diamond Youth Football Softball All-Stars. Proclamation in recognition of achievements of the Chester 8U Diamond Youth Softball All-Stars that entered the Diamond Youth Softball World Series in Fairfield, Tennessee, July the 17th through 22nd, 2024. Whereas, the Chester 8U Diamond Youth Softball All-Stars began with other districts, two teams from Blacksburg, Falls Springs, Clover, E2, District 5, Fort Mill, Gadsden, Gray Falls, Langston, Russell, Rock Hill, Spartanburg, Union, Woodland, and York. And whereas, the 8U Diamond Youth Softball All-Stars became the 8U District Champion after completing on June the 15th of 2024. Whereas, the 8U Diamond Youth Softball All-Stars became the 8U State Champion on July the 2nd, 2024, after winning the championship in Georgetown, South Carolina. Whereas, the 8U Diamond Youth Softball All-Stars were advanced to compete in the 2024 Diamond Youth Softball World Series, July the 18th through 22nd, 2024. Whereas, the Chester County Council advised that the 8U Diamond Youth Softball All-Stars be afforded the opportunity to attend the 2024 Diamond Youth Softball World Series in Fairview, Tennessee. And whereas, the Chester County Council recognized the Chester 8U Diamond Youth Softball All-Stars for their outstanding accomplishment of winning both the district and state championships. And therefore, I, Joe Brown, the chairman, on behalf of the Chester County Council, be hereby proclaim $2,000 to be awarded to the Chester 8U Diamond Youth Softball All-Stars in recognition of their achievement and assistance in their attendance at the 2024 Diamond Youth Softball World Series in Fairview, Tennessee. In witness of this, therefore, I have here unto set my pen and call for silver Chester County to be picked on this fifth day of July in the year, by Lord, 2024. Everybody give him a big hand. And also at this time, Mr. Corey Guy had something he wanted to say, so he's not here today, but we're going to ask Ms. Mosley to say what he had to say.
Corey was lengthy in his absence tonight with his wording, so I'm going to go ahead and read this for him. First, I would like to apologize for my absence. I am on a much needed vacation this week in St. Lucia in the Caribbean Islands. Poor Corey. I want to congratulate the girls softball team for their incredible accomplishment. Accomplishing things like this don't come easy. They take hard work, dedication, and support from parents and a great coaching staff. It also takes a hardworking and dedicated baseball and softball board and county recreation department. I was once a member of the Chester County Baseball Board. I've also coached two All-Star teams and several Chester County Youth and Legion baseball teams. I understand the dedication it takes to win state and regional tournaments. I am overwhelmed and very ecstatic that Chester County will be represented in the Softball World Series. When I heard about this outstanding accomplishment, I immediately contacted our county administrator, Brian Hester, to let him know what was going on and we needed to do something special for you guys. Mr. Hester immediately jumped into action without any hesitation. When your elders, county and city leaders, and most of all, your community support you, it helps you grow athletically, but it also helps you grow academically and socially, which are very important. So I just want to let you guys know that I am very happy about your accomplishment and let's go win it all and bring that trophy back home. Let's go Chester, Chester on me, Chester on three, turn up, Corey Guy.
Mr. Brandon, we're going to ask that they all come up in front of the dais and the council members can all stand up and we'll get a big, really good picture with the coaches and the players up here in front of the dais as well, if you don't mind.
Y'all just go right through here, kind of line up in front.
Yes.
Yeah, you guys come around behind them if you want to get out. You girls step up a couple of steps. Girls, slide down this way. Center you go. Can you sit around this?
Down just a little bit. But I, Mike, can you see, all the grownups slide all the way down? That way we're... And then get in there like we love each other.
Come on in.
Big old family. You scoot over this hair, yep, yep.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that's much better, okay. All right, one, two, three. Give me a second, I'll fix that. Okay, one, two, three. Good job.
All good?
Yep, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
As the head coach, I'm going to have the Chester All-Stars...
Come right there. Come right there to the speaker.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that has supported us on this journey. And as the head coach, I'm speaking for the team, the board members, the parents, everybody in this room, even the ones that ain't in this room that supported us. I mean, no matter what we needed, you know, just the prayers was enough for us and we thank y'all for everything and we going to try to win it. We ain't going just to play a game, we going to try to win it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Moving along on to number six, under resolution 2024-8, providing preliminary approval pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Law of South Carolina, 1976, as amended for the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu and add of the law and taxes and special source revenue credit agreement in between Chester County, South Carolina, and a company identified for the time being as Project P-2373, acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates and other project company collectively is called a company, providing for a fee in lieu of added of the law and taxes and senate, providing for a special source revenue credit, creating or modifying a joint county industrial and business park agreement between Chester County and York County as to be established or enlarge the park and other related matters. Need a motion on that?
I move that we, council approves the resolution 2024-8.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion or questions on that? Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, thank you. Okay, resolution 2024-9, providing for changes in the county's employment personnel handbook relating to hours of work, payment of wages, overtime, and compensatory time, holidays, military leave, and hazardous weather, and providing for other related matters. Need a motion on that?
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2024-9.
Need a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Killian. Any questions or comments on that?
I have one question. I would assume Mr. Hester would be the one to answer this. Would you explain the military leave? How many people do we have? I'm assuming that's National Guard or Reserve Town?
Yes, sir. And I don't have an accurate number for you currently as to how many people that we have on the books, but we actually had to change the policy to mirror state law. We were not in conformance with state law with regard to the amount of time that has to be allowed for that leave, and so we had to change it from 10 to 15 days to be in conformance.
That is in compliance with the military...
Yes, sir. That brings us into compliance. That is 100% correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions? Hear none with the motion and the second? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, thank you. Okay, moving to number seven, administrative report, Mr. Hester.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, you got there quicker than I thought. Let me just a minute to pull that book of notes out. So a couple of things to run through tonight, just as information. I know at the last meeting I stated that I wanted to introduce our animal control supervisor, Stacy Hodgson. I wanted to bring her here tonight and introduce her to council. However, she sits on a board, a local board of directors, and she had a previous meeting that she had to be at. So we'll introduce her in the future, but it gives me a minute to clear up a couple of issues that arose out of that last meeting when I talked about her. So I had a couple of questions and I just want to make some clarity for the public. Stacy did not take the place of Jesse, who was our animal control director. There's two divisions under animal control. There's the shelter side and then there's the enforcement side. And Stacy fills the position that Jesse vacated to take the director's position. So I want to clarify that. I had some people in the community that, you know, were rather upset, thought Jesse was leaving and I was like, no, she is still there. And then at the last meeting, I also made a comment that this was the first time since I've been at Chester that the animal control, I think I said it like this, animal control was full. I didn't mean animals. I meant employees, okay? So I want to be clear. While we are pretty full on animals and we're always looking for adoptions, what I was trying to get at, and I probably wasn't clear in my communication, is that since I've been in Chester, our animal control staff, we at one point went down to two employees that kept that afloat. And we are fully staffed in our animal control facility with some really excellent employees. I'm very proud of what Jesse has done as director. So I just wanted to make those clarifications. Number two on my list is a new innovative program that we are starting in January. And I kind of want to just throw a little teaser out there tonight that we are starting a citizens' academy, a Chester County Government Citizens' Academy in January. We're going to open up enrollment probably in the next month or so. Callie and Christie are kind of heading it up and have been working with some surrounding counties that have done something similar. But basically with the citizens' academy, what happens is one week, one night a week for 10 weeks, for a couple hours those nights, citizens that sign up for this get to come and spend some time with us and learn about county government, learn all aspects of county government, from our fire, law enforcement, to public works, to economic development. And it's really an opportunity for us to share what really goes on behind the scenes and what those departments do and to sort of educate. There'll be a finance piece in there, there'll be an administrative piece in there, but hopefully we take them on some field trips, we'll go to the courthouse, probably take them to the jail, maybe they'll get to spend a night there if they would like, you know? But I've seen these programs work, programs work really well in other counties and it allows us to connect with the community and educate on what really goes on in areas like parks and recreation and what does our project manager do? And so this will be a good opportunity. So it will start January 7th. It'll be every Tuesday night. It'll be two hours every Tuesday night for 10 weeks. And we're first class, we're going to keep it kind of small, first 10, first 15 people that register, once we open up registration online, will be first come, first served on that first class. But we're hoping it's something that we can do twice a year. And again, I think it's just a way that we can connect and provide some education to our community. Number three that I have as part of, I just, this is kind of an update for, I'm not going to steal Harold's thunder, but I want you, the council, to know about, there's a committee that was formed at the courthouse. It had the judge, clerk of court, court admin, other staff that were appropriate, the solicitor, I think was a part of this as well, maybe William Frick, the public defender as well. But this committee got together and talked about security upgrades that needed to be done at courthouse. As you know, we have one cent sales tax money that's allotted for courthouse improvements, and so we took a portion of that money that was allotted for courthouse improvements and we are doing some major security upgrades. And some of this was information that was provided from a third party that came in and worked with the judge and the clerk of court, and then the committee kind of sat down and talked about these upgrades. But it was a collaborative effort with Mr. Hayes and I'll give you kind of for instance, but areas where there was easy access, where maybe there was only a single level of security, we added a level of security. There's ballistic protection that's being added to areas and entrances. There's bollards being added to where somebody couldn't drive into the courthouse and things like that, but needed security upgrades to bring it up to standard. And so a portion of that one cent sales tax money will be used towards those upgrades for the courthouse. And there's plenty left over for many more things that Mr. Hayes is working on for the courthouse, but he's working in conjunction with the people that use the courthouse to make the decisions on the upgrades that are needed. Just for the public's information and for councils, remember that we do not have a first Monday meeting in August. The next meeting after today will be August 19th. So there is no first meeting in August for county council. So next is kind of the fun part of tonight. I've got two new hires that I'm going to announce tonight to the public. They haven't officially started, but the first one, and let me make sure I don't misquote anything good about these individuals. But the first one is hometown, everybody knows, it needs no introduction. He's actually sitting right there in the front row with the red shirt on, was here for another reason, but Mr. JP McNeil was selected and has accepted our deputy fire director's position for Chester County. So we are very proud to announce his acceptance of that position. He's a Chester resident, he's a Chester High School graduate, he's a University of Phoenix graduate in business management and business administration. He also has worked for the Chester Fire Department, he's worked for the Richburg Fire Department, and was currently working for the state of South Carolina in a fire marshal's position. And we are extremely happy to have Mr. McNeil. He didn't know I was going to say all this tonight, I didn't know he was going to be here with the girls, but it's really fitting. But he will start August the 5th as our deputy fire director for Chester County, so let's welcome him. And then I would also like to announce that we have hired a planning and development director. We have found an extremely qualified candidate, and the great thing about our candidate is he's another Chester hometown resident. Mr. Jeremy Ward was offered the position for planning and development director and he has accepted that position. He will start September 15th. And I know that seems like a long ways out, but his wife was due to have their first child and she actually had it this past week, so we congratulate him on that. But we're going to give them a little time to get situated with their firstborn and to have that bonding time, and then he's got to work his notice as well prior to coming. But Jeremy's a graduate of USC and I promise I wouldn't hold that against him too much, but he went on to Georgia Tech. Now, if you know anything about Georgia Tech, that's where really smart people go to school. And I mean, I like to brag on Clemson, but really smart people go to Georgia Tech. So he got his undergraduate from University of South Carolina, went to Georgia Tech and got his master's degree in planning and development, and he's been working for the city of Toccoa since graduating college as their planning and development director, and we're bringing him back home to Chester. So I think that makes about eight hometowns that we brought back, which is really exciting. And we look forward to having that young man starting on September 15th. Both will live here in Chester too, and I know that's always important to our council and important to our community, and so both will reside right here in Chester County. Another, just a quick update, we've talked about the federal building as well as the lot that the county owns that's sort of diagonal to the federal building, the empty lot there and right off Saluda. And we've talked about some upgrades that we are considering. Mr. Hayes has got conceptual drawings that we've submitted to two architects and engineers for quotes currently. And what I want to explain to council is we're not quite ready to move forward, even though we're getting some of the quotes in place, and that's because I've enlisted the COG. And I met with Tyler Lewis, who does their brownfield work with the COG. And we know that there's a potential that the building has lead and asbestos, and we know that there was no filling station on the lot that we own. And so we've received some brownfield grant funding to assess both of those sites to make sure that they're safe. The importance of doing that now and the process, before we actually get moving in the process, is the fact that if we find it now, and again, grant funding paid for these assessments, but if we find that lead or asbestos or anything to do with the site where the filling station was, then we qualify for grant funding to clean it up. If we waited till we got into the process of construction and realized, oh goodness, here's a tanker, we've got problems, then we would have had to flip the bill to clean that up. So I think it's appropriate and doing our due diligence to have that work done on the front end so that we can qualify for monies to clean up for anything that's, that we are aware of prior to starting that project. But that's just an update, so you guys know what's going on with that. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. If nobody knows where that piece of property is, it's where, like you said, there was a shell station there. When we accepted that piece of property, I think it was from the McMasters out of Winsborough.
That's correct.
That's where it was. And we did a phase, I think we did a phase one on it.
We did.
Done something, I don't know.
We did.
It was something in the deed that they would be responsible for any hazardous stuff on that, so I don't know if you look at the deed or where they signed that over to us on that. So that's, is used for political signs now, if y'all come up through that, it's all used for it.
And Christmas lights.
And Christmas lights, yeah. You know where it is.
What are we going to use it for, Mr. Chairman?
My parking lot, it wasn't that.
No, the building.
I'm sorry.
What are we going to use the building for?
So it's ultimately going to be up to council what we use that building for, but we have discussed a home for probate, for probate court. And again, there's kind of two reasons behind it. One, we need a home for probate and somewhere that they have the space and safety and security. We don't really have that in our current location. And the other thing is too, we think from a standpoint of the city revitalizing, that it'll bring more traffic to downtown Chester as well. With their growth and with the things that are going on down there, it'll provide a little bit more foot traffic over there as well.
Right, thank you, then. I'd also like to welcome Mr. McNeil and Mr. Ward here to join our team here in Chester County. I think you're going to make, you're going to join in a good team, I can tell you. Mr. Hester will see to that. He runs a tight ship, we think. Congratulations to both of y'all on that.
He's got a good daddy.
Okay. All right, moving right along to, on the new business, the ATAX Board Recommendations, Ms. Maria Hedgeback.
Hey, how are y'all doing today? So for the recommendations that we recommend this year for the Arts Council Jingle Bell Bazaar, the total budget was $20,000. They requested $14,000. We recommend $5,000. They had 47.78% of tourists last year for the Arts Council operating support. The total project budget was $91,000. We, they requested $38,000. We recommend $16,000 with total tourists of 41.73%. The Downtown Development Association Hog on the Hill, total project budget $15,000. Amount requested $7,000, recommended amount $3,600 for 24% in tourists. The Downtown Development Association for Hilarity, total budget was $22,000. Amount requested $12,000, recommended amount $7,000 for 30.48% in tourists. The Historical Society for the Full-Time Operation of Museum and Archives, the budget is $175,000, requested $25,000. Amount recommended $16,000 for a total tourist of 58.82%. Historical Society for Full-Time Operation for the Chester County Transportation Museum, total budget 90,000. Total amount requested 25,000, total recommended amount 7,000, 91.54% in tourists last year. Fly Pie Fish Festival, total budget amount 31,000. Amount requested 15,000, amount recommended 10,000, 50.74% in tourists. For the Homecoming Finley Restoration Association, 30,000 total project budget, 5,000 amount requested, 1,975 recommended for tourists of 33.94%. And that is from the year before last because they haven't had it yet to give us this year's, I think that's correct. Fort Long Community Center Festivals, $35,000 for the total project budget, 9,000 requested, 3,500 recommended, 52.51% in tourists last year. Rotary Derby, total project budget $8,400, total amount requested 2,500, total amount recommended 2,500, 69.44% in tourists. The Martin Luther King Blues Festival, $245,500 of projected budget. Amount requested $75,000, amount recommended $1,000. Tourists last year 14.78%. Lando Arts Festival, project budget $1,600, amount requested 800, amount recommended 400, total tourists 17.81%. The Lando Minetta Mills History... The Lando Minetta Mills History Center, Lando Days, $4,300 total project budget, $2,000 requested, $1,000 recommended, 12.92% in tourists. The Museum Operations for Orlando, total project budget $42,000, amount requested $21,000, amount recommended $5,050, amount of tourists last year is 27.81%. Chester County Chamber Ag and Art Tour, total project budget, and these, these last three are new events. $15,000, amount requested $15,000, amount recommended $1,975. There's no tourists for last year, 'cause it's a new event. The Memorial Building Commemoration Project, $12,500 projected budget, $10,000 requested, $1,000 recommended. Fort Long Community Center Arts and Cultural General Operating Fund, $72,000 total project budget, amount requested $15,000, amount recommended $4,000. Any questions?
I have, I have several.
Go for it.
You've mentioned the Fort Long Community Center twice.
Yes, so you can apply for an event, or you can apply for operating cost. So you can apply twice for both.
That comes through your committee?
Correct.
I went to the Fort Long Town Council meeting several months ago, and I went to the Richburg Town Council meeting this past Monday, a week ago. The Fort Long Town Council asked for some receipts for $8,000 they had given the Fort Long Community Center, and those receipts were not forthcoming. Is that through your committee, or is that through another ATAX?
So, the ATAX that we deal with is what comes through the Chester County. Each municipality, Fort Long, the township of Fort Long, I assume Richburg, I assume maybe Lowry's, and other places like that that have the specific townships, and smaller municipalities can receive their own set of ATAX funding, and maybe Mr. Darby can tell us exactly how that's awarded, but I think the state would award it to those municipalities directly, or somehow maybe goes through here to go to them directly, based off the percentage that the state creates.
Well, the town of Richburg last Monday night said they got $15,000 a quarter, so that's $60,000 a year in ATAX money. Does that come through your committee, or is that something the state sends them?
It doesn't come through our committee, so it's my understanding that the top, once the percentage is awarded, a per $25,000 can go to the general fund, and then there has to be a specific municipality that gets 30% for, you're making me come up with this off the top of my head, 30% for the, the fund that it needs to go to, so that 501(c)(4) for the county, it goes to the Old English District, that's the one that gets the 30%, 'cause you have to have one person there. Am I getting it close?
Close. Yeah, Mr. Agee, I think those funds go directly to those municipalities.
They, they come from the state and go to those municipalities.
That's right.
But they're called ATAX.
Yeah, that-
But they do not come through you and Ms. Hedgepass Committee and our approval, so they can do whatever they choose to do with that money.
Well, the state has guidelines and specifications, and there's legislative guidelines, and then state guidelines that each municipality should follow in order to distribute and receive those fundings, and what they need to do with them, and then there's an end-of-year closeout that they have to send to the state as well.
Well, the, the question I have is, are they double dipping? In other words, if they get money for their municipality, and then they turn around and ask us for money, that seems like they're, they're-
Well, technically speaking, in a small scale, I guess they could be considered double dipping a little bit, but let's, the community center, let's use that for an example, so yes, they have act, they can request, or qualify, or whatever ATAX funding they wanna do through Fort Long, however they do that. But then through us, they're still bringing tourism into Chester County, and we are the county as a whole.
Yeah, I don't really have any, we don't have any control or how they use those funds within the municipality. We just obviously see what comes through the county, but we're, you know, they have an application process through us, and then they also have to fill out a final report that shows their tourist impact on the-
So it would be the state's responsibility for the audit, then?
Yep, we, we fill out an annual audit to the state, it goes to the Tourism Committee through the state, and they review all of our applications.
Okay. And, and Mr. Agee, to your point, we wouldn't even know how they get, or how much they get, or how they allocate. Our committee would, so if they, if they were, if one of the municipalities was spending it, let's say to the, the community center, I hate to use that as an example, but, 'cause we were talking about it, and then that committee wouldn't know, we wouldn't know, if they weren't already allotted.
That's my whole point, is, is the Fort Long Community Center does the Fall Festival, or there's a Fall Festival in, in Fort Long. So she's just allocated money to them for the Fall Festival, if I heard her right.
Right.
The town of Richburg has a Fall Festival, and there's some other, there's some other folks involved in that process of running it, but there's no ATAX money through your committee that went to the Richburg Fall Festival.
They have to apply, so if they didn't apply-
Well, that's why I'm trying to get, I wanna understand all this, because there, there's some, there's some information that's not, not coming forth with from how all this works, not y'all.
So they put into, so Chester County, us, we put in the newspaper for three weeks, I think it ran for three weeks in the newspaper about you can apply for the ATAX funding, yada, 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 they have to fill out an application process, it comes to us, we approve the application process based off the amount of allocation that the state specifies that we have to spend, that the committee allocates, and then they have to find a file, file a final report, which we review also in the meeting, and then once that is done, and it Annie's up to how it was last year versus this year, and I think they review it as well, then, then we proceed on with the years to years. And each municipality, my understanding by reading the legislative documents, is that each place that received this ATAX funding from the state should have their own set of regulations and guidelines that they follow based off of what the state tells them.
That's what I'm trying to get to of all the people in this county that I know how, that knows how to count, you're, you're one.
Well, this-
I know you know how to count.
I don't wanna say it's double dipping either, 'cause you're not asking for full funding, they're not asking for full funding, and they're not likely to get it. So if you, if you apply here, and you don't apply to the state, thinking you're gonna get all the money from here, it's still, it's gonna be beneficial to them to apply wherever they need to.
So, yes, nothing's ever funded 100%. And the other thing is, that on the application process that we receive, they have to let us know if they received ATAX funding in the year prior from another municipality, so we can see that they received ATAX funding from their location versus what they're asking us for, for their ATAX funding, and it is in our application process. And so we allocate, we take that into consideration, and there's a percentage that it needs to be, so the percentage of tourists versus the percentage that you're asking for needs to be at a certain place, and we make sure that that's allocated for and thought of.
All right, any further questions for Mr.?
I have a question, and a comment, thank you for serving. This is a, not a simple process, and how many times do you guys meet a year?
One.
One time a year. And if you look at the month, the numbers, we have groups asking for $291,000 and change of, they asking for that much in allotments, and what was the amount of money you had to give out?
Eighty-seven thousand dollars.
That's a big difference. And so it takes a lot of hard decision-making, and I appreciate the folks that serve on it. I do have a question about the folks that serve on it.
Okay.
Do we have any members of the board that are part of the groups, any group that are applying for the money?
Yes, sir.
We do.
We do. And I'll tell you, that was one of the biggest concerns, when John appointed me to this position, and in the first meeting that we had last year, they appointed me as the chair. I'm like, oh, thanks, guys. But anyhow, that was one of the biggest concerns I had going on to it. I was like, how is this gonna work? How is this gonna be? Like, you, you're asking for money, but you're sitting on this committee, how is everybody else gonna feel about telling you, no, we're not doing that? Or telling you, no, that's too mu, you know, whatever the case may be. So when I got appointed chair before the meeting started last time, la, last year, I decided that that was something that, you know, we would nip in the bud, and they had procedures in that place for that. So those people recused theirself from the conversation about their specifics. So whenever we go through the list, those people get up, they leave the room, they're not in the room at all, we have the conversation without them, the number goes in there that we decided upon, and we move on. And that happens for the, there's three that are affiliated in some way with people asking for funding, and so there hasn't been any issues with that so far. I feel like I might be wrong, but I feel like I run a tight ship when it comes to that, and I'm very adamant, and if, if one tries to make a comment about their project or their funding or whatever, later, once they're back in the room and we're going back over things, I pretty much tell them that they need to be quiet, and they can't talk about that.
Well, I appreciate your concerns and your, the actions you've taken to try to work on that, and I think it's the responsibility of this council as to who gets appointed to this board, and if anything's gonna be changed, but it's our responsibility, not yours, and, but thank you for what you do.
Okay.
So along those same lines, so I wanna thank you for what, your hard work, and it shows that you've done your due diligence, we appreciate that, this is a hard job. Appreciate you and the whole committee. I have an opening for District Four. I've had it for a while, I've really struggled to find somebody willing to serve on that committee. So I'm, I'm putting it out there for anybody listening, or anybody that might have any interest, I've got to find somebody to serve in that board before next, when's the next meeting?
June-ish of next year.
June, so we got some time, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna work really hard to try to find somebody, and, and I would really, if anybody hears this, or knows anybody that you recommend, please get them in touch with me.
I think they need to be in the, like, hospitality industry, as far as like-
Right.
-the housing industry, that's what we're missing, or one we need something else with. So like, they have Airbnbs, or they have hotel experience, something like that, I think.
Or food, or, yeah.
I think it's recreation as well, 'cause we were speaking to that, something with recreation.
Yeah, there's a couple of little things that we need to, for that one.
That's right.
I think there's two open positions, is that right? Just, just you, sorry.
Where's the other open?
It's just him.
Sure.
We filled the other one. Or y'all filled the other one.
All right.
Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Y'all want me to talk some more?
Thank you, Ms. Hedgepass, for doing a, a great, a great job on that. Okay, are we gonna need to pass that?
Need to vote, need to vote to approve it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we'll need a motion to approve the ATAX report, a recommendation.
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the recommendations as presented by the ATAX board.
I'll second it.
Second, got a motion and second, any further questions, comments? Here none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. You're not on the spoke. Excuse me, let me get some water, I'm gonna frog in my throat. All right, moving along to the, on the agenda for is the Chester County Penny Sales Tax Project, Mr. Harold Hayes, project manager.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, county administrator, county attorney, hope all is well.
Raise your, just like, there you go.
A few months ago, we came and we gave an update on the CPSTs project, and we reported on 53 projects. And at that time, back on February 5th, of those 53 projects, 11 hadn't started, 12 had started, and 30, or 56% of the CPST projects were completed. As of today, all of the projects have started, and 35, or 69 of all the CPT projects have been completed. And the reason a lot of that is happening, because a lot of these projects have started. When we reported the last time, the Chester School District Park Elementary School bus loop cover hadn't even started. But at this point, as you can see from the images, they are probably at 80% with majority of the work needing to be done in landscaping, but all of the, the canopy coverings are up, and we just gotta do some landscaping on that project. Another project highlight is the Great Falls Library Project. On this project, we needed to replace the ADA ramp, 'cause it wasn't compliant. We did that as of last week, that photo on the right shows that we're pretty much complete with that project. Another project highlight, I won't speak on this too much, 'cause I had a video for this, but I think everyone has probably already seen that video, but on this project, we're, we have the high mast lighting up, we're looking at other options as to bring more lighting into the area, because the high mast light doesn't shine as bright as we would like along the ramps. So we got, we're, we're looking at a couple different options to solve that problem. I don't want that to happen. Another project highlight is the Town of Great Falls Visitor Center. This project is, it hadn't started, but it started now, and the drawings, as of now, is at 50% complete, and I was told that by the end of July, those drawings would be at 100%, where the drawings can now go out to bid. Then there was some more images, those were sections of that project, and that's it.
All right, any questions or comments for Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, let me, let me answer a couple of questions. I had a phone call, I had three phone calls today.
Mm-hmm.
Number one is the Rodman Ball fields, I've been on council.
Mm-hmm.
I won two years ago in June, and nothing has started, and that's been two years.
Okay, so let me give you an update on that. We advertised a bid for Rodman on June 20th, and tomorrow, we have a questions deadline for the contractors, and then we'll have addendum be issued on July the 18th, and then the bid open will be the 25th, and August 1st, we're looking to award the project.
Has, has this project been presented to the recreational board of Chester County?
Um-
It has.
It has.
It has been presented and approved by the recreational board of Chester County.
Mr. Stoudamire, I'm correct in saying it has, and I was at that meeting.
Right.
Is that, okay.
Yes.
That's what I wanna-
So we'll, we'll move along with it.
Second thing is, is where's the permit for the fire station on South Fork Road for the Lewis Fire Department?
That has been-
Where's that permit procedure at? Because the grading's been done, the building has been delivered, but the permit has not been issued.
It's under review currently. Yeah, that, we, we got the drawings back from the manufacturer, we're now doing a review through our planning, planning department, and it's under review.
But if you've got some more to say on that? The only thing I was gonna say, good evening, council, Mr. Hester, this work. So, they had some comments, Dave's got the engineer firm to make the changes to it, and then they gotta resubmit the changes that was during the plan review process. So we had a few comments that has to be addressed, Dave's aware of them, Harold's aware of them, and they making those changes to resubmit.
Did the changes cost us more money?
No, sir.
Okay, and the building?
Huh?
And the building, was it changes to the building, and there-
No.
Was no additional cost? Okay. And is animal control, is that in the one cent sales tax? Is that separate?
That's separate.
Separate.
Yes, sir.
Those are my questions, that's all I got.
All right, any other questions?
Will you be going back and looking on, looking at these projects again in the future, you know, kind of riding?
Yes, yes, I, I will be, but right now, we want to make sure that all the money's allocated to the municipalities was being spent, so that we don't have to, so we don't lose it.
I think the 2020 capital project sales taxes, because of the number of projects that are already completed, is an improvement, already showing improvement over the 2014, that one had great difficulties, because projects did not submit realistic cost estimates.
Mm-hmm.
So I really appreciate you looking into this and keeping us informed on it, so that we can, if we need to help municipalities or anybody else to finish their projects and, and make the 2020 projects, get them all completed on dead, before the deadline.
Okay, great, you're welcome.
Is there enough, is it, Mike, is there enough money allocated for the one cent to fix that building like it was proposed?
Though, that, that, that project is a good example of one that we, the cost estimate was, it changed drastically from the time we submitted it. it changed drastically from the time we submitted it to the time that the project actually started. But they will be able to do, work on the first and second floors with the bulk of it being on the first floor and prepare the second floor for work to come.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make three, three quick comments. I'd just like to say, one of the reasons I wanted Harold to present on this tonight was the fact that when he did present last time, not all the projects were started. And the reason all the projects were started is because of Mr. Hayes. Because after that meeting, and again, you got to think, he hasn't been on with us for about seven or eight months. But he sent letters, he followed up with meetings with municipalities, with all the entities that had one cent sales tax, and ensured that they understood the timeline that they were under and the repercussions for those timelines. And I think it's a testimony to, to him taking this, his position and the 53 projects on as to where they are. And we're in really good shape with those projects. And that's just testimony to his work. The Great Falls Library, some things you guys don't know that goes on. It's not just, well, he, he manages a project and it starts and he walks away from it. He's out there about daily. I go looking for him quite a bit. And, you know, he gets the point on my, Harold, you're ever in the office. But he's always on the job site. And Great Falls Library, the ramp was a prime example of the contractor didn't, they didn't complete the job properly. And I was with him in the car when he was talking to the contractor a couple of times. We were going somewhere. But he made him come tear it out and redo it because their grade was off by however many percent and the slope was too great on it. And so he, he doesn't just make sure his projects are going, he goes out and inspects. He checks during the construction. He checks after construction. He works with our planning and zoning, you know, Mr. Levis and to the inspectors to make sure that they're done right and properly. And so I think that's really a testimony to what he's done. I'm, I'm very proud of the fact that all the projects are underway and he stays on top of those. And then just a quick follow-up on when it comes to, and Mr. Age, you kind of brought this, this up with, in the discussion, Mr. Vaughn, or the comment he made about not all projects were, and you got to think, when these projects were estimated in 2017, 18-ish, they were all underestimated, the, the larger projects especially. And so we do have money in that, that capital project sales tax fund from interest, Mr. Darby, as well as money that's, that's still in there to cover some of the, the big projects that obviously we all know they weren't, you know, fully funded, like Rodman Ballfield. It was funded from two or three sources, but still, you know, we're, we're probably going to be a couple hundred thousand short. But we have money there to make that up. And I'll make sure that council is fully aware of those figures. When the bids come in and we have those numbers, I'll make sure you know dollar for dollar what was allocated, what else we're having to put in, where it's coming from. There won't be no surprises. And then I think the Visitor Center was another prime example of that. And there was one more that we didn't quite have. Lewis Fire Station had to be funded. Now, it wasn't, the changes were no additional dollars, but prior to Lewis even getting off the ground, there had to be extra money that was put into that because it wasn't, you know, again, today's, I think we got a quote a couple of months ago on something, and just in a year, and Ms. Hestert can attest to this, that about 20%, 25% a year, things are increasing in that construction world as we speak today, if we don't jump on things. So, but again, I just wanted to say all that to thank Mr. Hayes and let you know there's a lot more than just sitting, he doesn't, he doesn't really sit in an office too well.
Not too much.
He's always got his laptop, too.
Right.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
All right.
For that report. Again, that's another Chester County guy.
Right.
That's right.
Okay, moving on to C, Chester County Transportation Committee funded Mr. Robert Hall for the Public Works Direct.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, county council, Mr. Hester. Got some exciting news I want to talk about tonight. Just couldn't wait to share it with you. So as everyone knows, the state allocates funds annually to Chester County to assist us in maintaining or paving or repaving our county maintained roads. In doing so, they require that we use 33% of that money for South Carolina DOT roads. Well, this year, Chester County has been allotted an annual fee of 1.5,607,000 to spend on county maintained roads, with the 33%, of that being spent on DOT roads, which I put some numbers out there. For DOT roads, we'll have to spend 517,000 on the, on the DOT roads for the annual allotment. In addition to us getting that, I just received an email last week that we're going to be getting the one, one-time money again. And that is 2,711,900. So we are required to spend 25% on DOT roads, which equals 677,975. And you may ask a question.
Tell me those numbers on the, the first money.
The first money?
And 30% on DOT.
30%, 33% will be spent on DOT. So the, the, um, the one-time money, did you get the one-time money?
Yep.
Okay. So I, I don't know if anybody caught the fact that I said 25% of that has to be spent on DOT.
How much is that, somebody?
I do. You want to know for each one of them?
No, no, just 25% for the one-time money.
677, 678,000. So if, if the one-time, the reason it's only 25% for the one-time money, it's only required that we spend 25% on that if the money we get from the state is more than what our annual allotment is. So then we only have to spend 25% of that money. So with the annual allotment, we got to spend 33%. With the one-time money, we only got to spend 25% of that on state roads. And I've kind of sent a list out to you guys, kind of letting y'all review some of the roads that were on the list. And I appreciate y'all getting, responding back. That, that's just the list that we're going to be sending to the engineering firm to get cost estimates for the future, which will be in September for y'all to choose the roads to be paved. So.
When will these projects start?
So I, I, once, once I get, finish compiling that list, I will send it to our engineering firm. They will give us cost estimates. So then I'll provide that list back to you guys. And then y'all will decide on which roads we're going to get paved based on the funds we have.
Well, how long will that process take?
It'll probably take them 30 to 45 days to get the cost estimates. And then we'll get, we'll get them back to council.
This is basically the same thing we did last year.
Basically the same thing we did last year, yes, sir.
And just so council knows, the road choices from last year haven't even started yet. That's how far behind the contractors are. So to your point, Mr. Branham, the roads you choose this September probably won't start construction till August, September of next year. But there's a lack of paving contractors in the state because the state's doing so much paving. So is North Carolina. And so we're kind of at the mercy there.
How much was the one-time money last year? It went up, didn't it?
It went up, yes, sir. I don't have, I don't have that number with me.
It was roughly $300,000. It was very low last year. The year before, it was two, it was a major one-time allotment again. It was close to $2 million. But last year was very, very little money.
But that, that money you're talking about is.
It's airborne street.
Is county, is county roads, right?
Yes, sir.
So like paving 901 and paving Lila's Mill 223, that's all county, state roads. And they're getting ready to pave those.
Correct, yes, sir. Very good point.
Just quickly.
Yeah, this is funds here that are sent to us to help us maintain our roads, whether it be by gravel or paving or repaving or whatever. And, you know, at my last meeting that I met with you guys, I showed you where you could go on to the DOT and see what roads they're paving. And I have, I have the list for upcoming, upcoming 25. They sent me that the other day. If y'all were interested, if anybody was interested in the state part of what they're going to do in 25.
I think it'd be good to provide council an email so they could at least see those roads as well. Mr. Hall's working on with AMT on a GIS mapping of our roads to provide to council. That'll be done probably before they make a choice, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's pretty exciting.
I'll show you the roads that are currently on the list that need to be finished. And I'll show you roads as you select them and then hopefully give us condition of those roads as well.
Correct.
I think, I get a ton of calls about roads. Every week I get a call about roads most of the time. So it's a hot topic for the general public. And most of the general public does not really understand the difference between a county road and DOT road.
Yes, sir.
Anything we can put on the website to educate folks and give them information would be great.
All right, we can do that.
So, Mr. Hall, would you have an estimation, just a ballpark figure, for how much it costs to pave a mile right now?
Say that again.
What's the cost to pave one mile? What's, how, how far, how much of the money does it take per mile? As we look at this list and we're looking at different roads and trying to decide, some of these longer roads, are they even in the ballpark for something that we should get priced out? Or do you have any idea what?
I don't have an idea on that one.
Could you work on that? Maybe let us, let us know? Kind of might help, help us decide which roads we want to kind of shoot for.
Okay.
I, I think, Mr. Wilson, our current company that we, we've gone with had thrown a number similar to that out per mile. But I think it also, the curviness of those roads makes a little bit of difference in it as well.
Give me a range.
I, I can't remember the numbers properly. But there is a number, we'll get it for you.
That would be helpful.
Mr. Hall, you already got what I need, right?
Yes, sir.
That's all I want.
You should, you should have received an email from me.
Okay.
With yours there, yes, sir.
That'll be what's up.
All right. No more questions? Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
All right. Moving right along to number 10 on the agenda, boards and commissions. Board of Assessments Appeal, Ms. Erin Mosley, Head Large Councilman.
Yes, sir. I had my appointee, he and his family have decided they're going to move closer to the beach. So he's no longer going to be able to serve on the board, and that's Mr. Chris Flynn. So another beach goer we have. So anyway, so he has had to resign from that seat. But luckily, we do have someone willing to serve. And I would like to nominate Mr. Lyle Dickerson for the Board of Assessment Appeals.
I'll second.
Oh, do we have to make a motion to allow that other one to be off first?
I'm sorry, say that again.
We have to, as far as the resignation, we have to vote on that also.
Who resigned?
Mr. Martin. I don't, I think consensually, you, you guys don't have to vote on that. If there's no objection to him resigning, we just move forward with the new nomination.
Well, it is accepted, his resignation.
Right.
Basically what we're doing.
Correct.
What we're doing. The council accepts that. And then you'd like to nominate Mr. Dickerson, correct?
Yes, sir. Lyle Dickerson.
All right. Need a motion to accept Mr. Dickerson for the Transportation Committee funding.
I'll second.
We got, well, no, it's for the Board of Assessment. Excuse me, I looked at the wrong thing. All right, you got, got a motion? And you got seconded, Mr. Hayes? All right?
Pete, Pete seconded it just a moment ago.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Before we had that brief discussion, we'd already seconded.
That's okay.
That's all right.
That's okay. We all, we kind of got all.
So we do have a motion and a second now. All right.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor of Mr. Dickerson for the Board of Assessment Appeal, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
You're down on this vote. Thank you. All right, now we're going to need a motion to go into executive session. Two, discuss the matters relating to a proposed location, expansion, and provision for services encouraging location or expansion of industry and other business in the area served by the public body. Project number two, P 2443. And B, receive, accept of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending, threatened, or potential claims or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. Settlement of legal claims or positions for public agency and other adversarial situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim that considered under the county landfill. Under C, receipt of legal, legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending, threatening, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or position for the public agents and other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. This includes project 2024 MPV. And under D, discussion of employment appointments, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, or the appointment of a person to a public body. County Council and Article 7 of Chapter 9 of the Title 4 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina. Okay? You got a motion to go into executive session to discuss these matters.
I'll make a motion and go to executive session.
All right, need a second?
Second.
All in favor of going to executive session to discuss these matters?